All right, I hereby open the Planning Commissioner work session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Quavilla.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Buck. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
All right, thank you. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. During the Planning Commissioner, during the Planning Commission regular session at 7:00 PM this evening, we will have business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the Planning Commission on any subject not otherwise on our agenda for a hearing this evening. And until that point, we have one agenda item, and that is the Comprehensive Plan Map Clarification Project, and Monica Sather will be presenting to us today. And as Monica gets set up here, just want to remind the commissioners that we are not being asked to come to any conclusions. This evening, we're just asked to give feedback and recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you so much for your time this evening. Tonight's meeting is a real critical step toward informing a draft of Springfield's very first own property-specific comprehensive plan map. The project team identified key policy-related topics to consider for creating that map along with questions and options to address for each topic that we'll discuss with you this evening. This with hearing input on how the commission would like to proceed with mapping is the focus of the work session. And just given, we haven't met in this capacity, but have met as the CCI and with our new commissioners here, I'd like to recap why we're working on this project and then also provide some progress updates that will be new to everybody. So I do have a presentation. I'd like to speak to those things first and most excited about the discussion and questions that would appreciate just getting to go through those slides first. So I'll pop everything up here. Get loaded. Okay. So as I mentioned, just want to give a recap and frame things for those who haven't heard yet. So what are we actually doing to create this map just for Springfield? This project will replace the Metro Plan diagram east of I-5, and we'll do this by showing individual properties comprehensive plan designations. And we currently don't have that as a resource because we refer to the Metro Plan diagram for the most part. That diagram complements the Metro Plan text, which both serve as a guide for change for outlining goals and policies for topics like parks and open space, residential land, and more. And of relevance to this project, it really should provide clear guidelines for coordinated planning decisions alongside the diagram. But the diagram is a high-level schematic map of what's intended for general areas, and for the most part, it doesn't show the size or shape of individual properties. There's a real tie to why we're doing this with the Metro Plan. The text of the Metro Plan speaks to the need to evolve to a property-specific diagram and recognizes that we and Eugene both will create city-specific comprehensive plans. So here is the latest, though unofficially adopted version of the diagram. This is from 2010. If I could zoom in more, you would see the broad brush stroke graphic theme I mentioned even better. This diagram has also been referred to as the Blob Map. And here's a zoom-in example of how information could look different by creating a property-specific map through our interpretation of that general Metro Plan diagram. On the right here, you can see more detail about streets and property lines as compared to the current Metro Plan diagram style here on the left. So differences, but then you'll also not see much difference between the plan designations as shown by the colors here. So darker yellow-orange color here, and then a pink or a red. So by doing this, people would have a way to see how individual properties are planned in Springfield with better confidence here. One reason why answers about a property-specific plan designation are not always easy or not always quick to provide is we found that the line here, these black lines between each different designation color, it's about 300 feet wide, which can cover a lot of small properties in a city context, more urban. So there are a number of properties we're looking at to interpret the diagram to see whether it makes sense to assign one color or another. In the case where a property lands on having more than one color appear, we're using the term split designation, so keep that in mind as we keep our discussion going here. And to reinforce the key aspects of what this project does and doesn't do, it's a fact-finding project to interpret existing information. We'll bring forward what's been in place for years to make information clear, but it's not a visioning project yet or a major overhaul to reimagine what the community wants Springfield to be. It is an opportunity to resolve as many things that are unclear as possible to solidify what's there. So thinking about what's been adopted as far as we can tell. And then why this matters, had a lot in the memo to explain about this, but to recap, it's not exploring major change, but it still really has meaningful results that can benefit many people. So adopting a property-specific comprehensive plan map will bring us one step closer to creating the land use element, which is basically a chapter of Springfield's comprehensive plan. And so this map will become the visual component or part to that chapter. Comprehensive plans are sometimes one of the first resources people use when trying to understand if accomplishing their visions or goals for a property are even possible. For this next point, imagine your neighbor wants to start a project, but they need to know what land use parameters are in place before they can even start building or planning for that. An example might be to know what the zoning is and if it matches a plan designation. That's a requirement in some of our land use applications currently, so it's a test to pass before even going to construction. They then try researching, this person would try researching online to try to find the plan designation, but right now they can't easily find that answer, especially without having property lines. City staff may also have the same issue, so it could take days to even get back to someone with an answer there, and that potentially could delay a project. So the work to make this map, it will and should ultimately resolve these situations and save time and provide confidence, given that people should be able to use at their fingertips property research that are accurate, quick to access, easy to use. That's the goal. This will become a tool. And this map will also help us, as we'll likely sense needs for land becoming more challenging to address over time. It will serve as a basis for determining how much of Springfield's residential land supply exists and is buildable, whether through new development or redevelopment. And this knowledge will feed into a foundational piece of Springfield's housing capacity or needs analysis, as we've referred to in the past. So we have recap for updates and progress I'm excited to share this evening. Backtracking to an earlier task, we, before even communicating or thinking about spreading the word, had a lot of background resources to gather, but then also really benefited from coordination with other agencies who've worked towards similar efforts or who are, and this all led into a major task, which is Task 2 highlighted here. Part of this effort meant creating the project webpage and meant this commission, and your role is the Committee for Citizen Involvement, approving a community engagement plan. Part of that work involved the CCI, as my abbreviation for Committee for Citizen Involvement, appointing a project advisory committee that formed as a result of substantial recruitment within the region. The project team also solidified a technical resource group, and I'll get into more about composition of both advisory bodies here in a second. So this has the most content, I'd say, of a lot of the slides, so bear with me. The big lift on a first draft of the map is happening now, so this Task 3 has a lot going on. It's the research-heavy mapping task to determine plan designations for properties that we have questions about, but then also look at some of the bigger-picture mapping approaches related to the topics that we're talking about this evening. We've completed our first series of meetings with both our project advisory committee and technical resource group who've really helped us, and we're really thankful for the balanced and thoughtful discussions they've provided us. Each met separately several times to provide insight on the questions, which are outlined in Attachment 5. Those were, that's an example of all the questions we asked asked to them, and then some of which we have for your consideration this evening. The project advisory committee is made up of Springfield residents, people who work in Springfield, and several land use planning experts in the private sector. Membership details we have as an attachment, Attachment 4 in the packet. And the technical resource group is made up of Land Council of Governments, Land County, City of Eugene, Springfield Schools, Springfield Utility Board, Willamette Lane Park and Recreation District, and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. So getting into how we're doing the map and what's going on with that. To do that research, our mapping team converted what we saw as the Metro Plan diagram, and that's a PDF scan, basically, 11 inches by 17 inches, and they transferred it as a digital version of the map that would allow matching up better with tax slot lines that you could work on with the computer. Then they were just able to see how things compared and overlapped. From there, we got a list of how many properties need property research, just, oh whoops, based on the 300-foot-wide line that I shared earlier. We came up with about 165 properties just with that extra size alone. A lot of research involves looking to see if any previous land use decisions, supporting documents like staff reports, or as a decision, maybe a council decision or ordinance. Just wanting to see if we had any paper trail to give us a confirmed answer that's written. There are times that we won't have that and don't, so we're planning on contacting owners of certain properties where the designation is unclear. That way, we can share what we found in our research and would like to give them an opportunity to let us know what they think the correct designation is for their properties. And the goal with doing this is really to start early communication before we bring a draft map forward through the adoption process. No surprises as the goal, basically. And then the remaining tasks here, four and five, show what's ahead, and that includes creating a draft map based on this commission's and council's input, and then eventually sharing the draft map with our advisory bodies, then moving to entire community engagement, and then at five here, once we have text amendments identified, whether Metro Plan or through our comprehensive planner code, bringing that forward to adoption. So moving on to input here, our questions for the commission are about key considerations for information display on the map that have policy implications. So this is a subset of all the questions asked to our advisory bodies. The next set of slides, I'll touch on ways we can approach each of the questions, but I won't get into the trade-offs of every single option for each topic. Just wanting to give a good amount of time for discussion. And we're also interested to know if the commission would like staff to proceed according to staff's recommendation, or if you prefer, we take another approach. So the first of four here, it's about whether to show plan designations for public rights of way or not, and then follow that on with written policy or practice. So the example here on the bottom-right circle shows what the map would look like if we did not designate rights of way or show them on the map, which would differ from the current Metro Plan diagram, because the Metro Plan diagram doesn't depict rights of way to this level of detail. Again, top circle being the black line representation of streets. These are just major streets, but it doesn't represent every street. So the options, as we considered them, were to designate public rights of way or not, so just two clear options. Another consideration is that Springfield zoning map shows zoning for public rights of way. So we also thought about whether it would benefit community members and just make operational sense for staff to align how we designate and zone rights of way. So bigger-picture thinking. Option 2 allows for the greatest opportunity for plan designations and zoning rights of way to be consistent and to streamline the development review process, which we detailed more in the written materials. With option 2, we no longer zonies rights of way, so both would be determined if and when an abutting property proposes to vacate the public right of way. And this could be possible without also having to approve an amendment to a comprehensive plan map or zoning map, which is more expensive and time-consuming to do. And then just one other benefit of this, not designating may also help map users better orient to finding their way around Springfield. The next topic, we're also interested in how to best display information about our adopted neighborhood refinement plans. For example, whether we should bring that information over into our comprehensive plan app and how that might look. The Metro Plan specifically recommends that people refer to refinement plans where such exist around Springfield in particular for our purpose. You can see an example of outlines of where some are here. And that's where individual property information is shown. So in essence, the refinement plan designation takes precedence, and this is not the Metro Plan diagram, by the way. Just one of the ideas for mapping that you saw in the attachment, the holes option. So knowing this, knowing that the refinement plan designation is priority, map users who have properties within refinement plan areas currently have two places to remember to look and to try to find the applicable designation, Metro Plan and then a follow-on step. So identifying the refinement plan designation can help people scope out. It just really helps, again, going back to what can I do with my property, and I want to start realizing my goals and vision. It helps them scope out, do I need a zone change? Do I need a plan amendment? So those kinds of questions. So this topic has the most options, so I'll walk through this whole thing. This might take a little bit. There are many ways we could show the comprehensive plan designations on the map, including bringing in the refinement plan information where those neighborhoods are. Option 1 would show the outline of where a refinement plan area is located, but would not show anything further about plan designations within that border, so that's the image I'm talking about, option 1 here. This would prompt someone to go look at a separate refinement plan map that applies to the property, but it's still a flag. If there's something else going on, look further. Option 2 would function similar to how the Metro Plan diagram currently does. We would have the interpreted Metro Plan designations as they're adopted, with the only difference being that property lines show up, or one major difference, rights of ways, another topic. But the map would show all colors for all properties, but we'd have a separate refinement plan map for someone to go look at. Options 3 and 4, they both bring in the refinement plan designations onto the map, but to varying degrees. We heard strong support from our technical resource group and project advisory committee that we should bring forward property-specific plan designations from refinement plans onto the map, so that way information is faster to get to and potentially not forgotten, which would eliminate options 1 and 2. And the memo in Attachment 7 of the packet really clearly in a bigger way shows these different map options, and I can, I'm happy to point those up or bring them up if that helps the discussion later. There were benefits to both options 3 and 4, and the trade-offs we considered really led staff to come up with taking the best of both for a recommendation of combining the two. So this is our hybrid over here. We're thinking about different ways people access the information. There's a PDF map and then an online interactive map called MapSpring. And on the PDF map, the various detailed mixed-use designations in the spirit of option 4 would get combined, and we would try to do the same for areas with parks, open space, public land, and similarly designated properties. The reason combining mixed use would really help is some refinement plans get really specific on what type of mixed use. They number and subletter. It's like mixed use 2, mixed use 3, 2A, 2B. And that's just one example of one refinement plan. So it can make the map pretty busy on a PDF map. Kind of trying to help with less clutter and more readability is some feedback we got. But that MapSpring, the online interactive map, it could still easily show all the detailed designations, and that's in the spirit of option 3. And then with this hybrid, unlike option 4, we would not amend the refinement plan text. Okay, nodal development as a next topic. Nodal development areas throughout Springfield came from the requirement of the state's transportation planning rule that the rule still exists, but nodal development is no longer required as part of that rule. However, these areas still serve a purpose locally of promoting transportation efficiency with areas that help people to not have to rely on cars for long trips. The key here being compact development with a variety of uses encouraged. Nodal development areas are sometimes just overlays, as shown here with this example. So on the top right, the red outline represents an overlay. But then sometimes they act as overlays in addition to being part of a property's base designation. And that's the example here on the bottom left, where the bright purple is the base designation. And then an outline in red, here's something extra to consider on top of everything else. So it's just inconsistent. And then we're going through ordinance history as well to verify accuracy of where the Metro Plan identifies these areas also. So moving forward, we could show all the nodal development areas as they're currently adopted. Some as overlays only, some as base designations and overlays. We could represent them all as base designations with option 2 by attaching them to any other, any other base designation that's in place. So for here, we would change it to low-density residential and nodal development. Somehow, we don't know naming convention quite yet, but it would just all be tied to a base, and the outline goes away. We could also treat them all as overlays, which are on top of or in addition to a property's primary base designation. So while option 1 is most consistent with the project scope, we also heard from the public's perspective that consistency across Springfield is desired, because it makes things more predictable and requirements easier to navigate. And our thinking with option 3, too, is it aligns with our development code, because our code treats nodal development areas as overlays. Thinking about just responding more nimbly and quickly to any reasons we might want to call these areas something else in the future. An example being just, you know, as we move forward with the state's climate-friendly and equitable communities rules as an example, either they change to something else, or this might inform that work. So just thinking ahead on how we can take information and quickly make decisions easier. And the last one here, so while the focus on the project is to provide specificity to the plan designation for each property, and that would be for everything in Springfield's UGB or urban growth boundary, not just city limits, there are reasons we may want to consider providing some flexibility, which is why we asked this question. The situations we considered are when a property is identified as having a split designation, meaning two or more map colors, like you see here, purple, yellow, orangish-yellow. We thought that these split designations could respond to a current situation, or be caused due to a reconfiguration of a property, so I want to elaborate a little bit there. Say someone 20 years from now has a development proposal and things on the ground have changed. Well, maybe these don't make sense anymore. How can we shift and reflect current conditions? Thinking about this question also, it could help projects with large development areas, especially those that have master planning potential. So with the options here, we could be clear under the first option that each line is fixed or set in stone. No ability to move or change anything. Or with option 2, where's my mouse here? Option 2, we could decide all boundaries should be kept entirely flexible regardless of if they're split designation or not, or sorry, that was option 3 here. So everything's flexible. We don't have any clarity. Just at the time someone proposes, we'll explore what we can do. And then a third option is option 2. So it would allow some flexibility with clear parameters for which situations would qualify. So in our minds, certain situations could be property line adjustments, land divisions, large development areas, as I mentioned. And then even thinking about lands designated, public land, government, parks, and open space education, we don't use those for buildable lands inventory, so we have some room there to look at things, especially given that they're tied to natural resources that often shift over time. So to avoid ambiguity with this option, we would need to approach this so flexibility can be possible in a clear, predictable way. And as I mentioned earlier, this could help with some reflecting on the ground conditions at the time if someone a long time from now has a land constraint that wasn't there today, for example. Maybe stormwater effects to topography or a shift in a river happens. The designation may no longer make sense. So having some flexibility there, it really also eliminates the need for a property owner to front the cost and go through a process of a comprehensive plan amendment or possibly zone change. That was another thing we thought about just in administering requirements. If we have some clarity, we can save people some money and time there, too. So at this point, staff are really interested in whether there's a topic in particular the commission would like to discuss or has questions about. Any overall thoughts? So I appreciate you sitting through that and looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Great, thank you, Monica. Do any commissioners have any questions for Monica or any responses to the questions that Monica presented? Commissioner Schmunk?
Well, I guess I'm curious about the interface. So I'm understanding you're talking about primarily online access. We're not talking, trying to adhere to a PDF, a PDF sort of unrealistic in terms of use for the person that needs this type of information.
We're thinking both, both situations. And then from our project advisory committee, most use the interactive online map. Were you thinking more, do people access online only, or were you asking about a printed map available like physically somewhere to look at printed, say, up in the hall or at a counter?
Well, I think a printed map would be, you know, helpful for some people superficially, but I assume that most of this discussion's about an electronic interface, web, web, web browser access. Is that correct?
As most people use it, but you made a great point. We don't want this to be limiting, because not everybody wants to go online or can. So that was part of the, in thinking about refinement plans, and especially, what would someone experience if they had so many colors and trying to match a designation with something? So I'd love to think about this in both ways, a spectrum of how someone would use the map.
Well, okay, but I'm, you're not going to realistically get the information you need out of a PDF. Is that accurate? Depending on your need, but planners and those folks that really, you're really trying to tailor this to, are not going to use a PDF. Is that accurate?
I think in a lot of cases, we could have someone use it, especially if they're outside of a refinement plan area. There would be, yeah, no reason they need to find two designations. Thinking about how we display streets, someone could just Thinking about how we display streets, someone could just, hey, I want to print this map. I see the street corner, my property's that. I see my tax lot boundaries. I'm matching it to my plan designation and and that would be their answer. So.
Okay, so if this is layers, why wires, they're they're a concern with putting the right ways on this when you could uh, uh, sorry, I should back up. Does map spring allow? I looked on a couple of cities. There were two that had a pretty interesting interface. Uh, Beaverton and Corvallis, they've looked like you could turn off and on layers. Does map spring do that?
Yes, turning on and off, yep.
Okay, so then what is the problem with having the right of way in there if you can simply turn it off to drill into what you want? Am I making sense?
Were you thinking, what's the problem with designating public rights of way or more showing the streets?
So, and and I'm new to this, so well, I I shouldn't give a qualifier. There's some of these questions I don't quite uh recognize your problem, but um you, it it appears that you're saying that right of way takes up three hundred feet. Uh, and if you put it on the map, it covers someone's property, yes, but but if you're you're wanting to see where those rights of way are, you could simply turn on that layer. Is that?
That helps quite a bit. Thank you. Um. I I should explain the issue more that we are having. So if those were turned off, as the metro plan currently exists, we would have nothing. There would be a gap um on the map. No plan designation, just blank space. And so someone's property, we wouldn't show the full picture. The black lines go away and I can even pop up an image again. The black lines go away and nothing's underneath. When we would click on a plan designation example or even, well, zoning is different right now, but we wouldn't have an answer to give them. Um, so the point of that issue with the three hundred foot boundary or line that those create. We need to answer, well, what plan designation lives there? Because that could be a whole tax lot that doesn't have a plan designation at this time.
Okay, all right, um. I guess one other one, thank you. Um, so is, is it, uh, you know, financially, the city's investment here, is it um? Is it, is it, is it a larger investment to maintain one? Uh, that is to transition to something that is one interface rather than keep two uh, one that's perhaps more detailed for folks that are only a certain subset of need? So I see you're confused by my question. I'm saying if this, if, 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 if you had the best software that you could and the city had an unlimited budget, you wouldn't probably use map spring. Is that fair to say? No maps.
I don't, yeah, I don't know, um. With that, um, I mean, we would have to maintain plan designations either way. Um. And through mapping, we and tools that we have, those spit out and create the PDF anyway. So we've already got an internal system that's created to do that. Um, it's just what the public would see. Um. And then I think just given we already have a map spring. And with staff research, the tool's been developed at this point um that we can easily transfer over and show. But I like your point about maintenance and ongoing maintenance um. Because, and I'm going back to that refinement plan topic. We're always going to have neighborhood refinement plans. So it's almost depending on what we decide on or what I hear is a preference. Thinking about how we can consolidate one place or mapping team goes to correct or update information. Um, the current situation is we have a metro plan that needs to be updated. We have refinement plan separate maps that need to be updated. Um, how do we explore now with this comprehensive plan map? Bringing in refinement plans that already take precedence. Um, already take priority for a plan designation. Um, as a specific example, why not just fold it in and there's only one place? Um, people need to look, one place our GIS staff team need to go. So there's time savings there. Um. But I really like your point about thinking on operational side of things. What does this mean for staff time? Um, we have had a GIS team on this project as core team and on those advisory groups. So they've been involved and have provided their input about what's easier, quicker, more efficient for them as well. Um, I should say one more follow up on your question with the three hundred foot line and the streets. Um. There are cases where turning that off results, say you were in the interactive interface here. It would result in a property possibly either not having a designation, but most times it's actually been, oh, there's two colors here and we need to figure out, is that true? Do we have a situation where there's two designations or colors or does that really need to move over three hundred feet or more? Um, so there's just a lot of work and our decisions being so property specific, but then having such a blobby general map, the scales just haven't matched up over time.
Maybe I can interject to explain some of the confusion. The current metro plan is not based on map spring. The metro plan was a very early product before, and I'm sorry, my son has an ear infection, so he's at home with me. My husband's not home right now, so um, and he's very needy. Um, the metro plan is based on a PDF that um didn't have that technology. So the issue that we're trying to solve is taking the very blobby nature of the metro plan where the scale of that document that is only exists as a PDF and has never been translated to GIS coordinates on a mapping system like map spring. That's the fundamental issue we're trying to address and where some of these three hundred foot requirements and those things come into play.
Commissioner Cleveland?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, first of all, uh, Commissioner Schmuck, thank you for your question regarding the electronic versus the uh hard copy, I'd call them, uh, maps. Uh, one question I have that also is a follow up to yours is the mine spring map. Is that, does that permit hyperlinks? Because in which case, just about everything that we'd want to maybe turn off like the uh designated colors in the right away. That could be generally turned off and then hyperlinked back on the um all the refinement plans could be hyperlinked, uh, et cetera. So that that might eliminate some of the problems on the electronic side of the mapping. Um. So could you answer that one, please? Thanks.
Yeah, we haven't applied that exact um exercise to this. Um, but I know that when I go around map spring, I can link to external web pages. Um, so I wouldn't see why this could be a challenge. Um, it seems doable. And one idea even was for the PDF map. If someone doesn't print physically and they go online, hyperlinks for those refinement plans or anything someone would need to know. Um, we can make that happen for PDFs also. Side sidebar to your question, but wanted to bring that up. So I think I would write that down as something to ask and explore the GI with the GIS team, but I I'm seeing no issue hyperlinking to Lane County's website, for example, or anything else. So, good point.
Yeah, a- as a follow up, um, I think that a site specific hyperlink might be very useful too. So if there's something that affects a lot to have the hyperlink, not just something that's general and sort of in the area, but that's something you know, I I know in CAD that you can put a hyperlink and drop it on a specific location. So that's kind of my question too is, is that can, can that be done in the mine spring map?
I need to ask a clarifier. So would you mean, I mean hypothetically, I'm interested in a property and I want to know everything that applies to it? For example, or
Well, I was, well, I was thinking in particularly along that right away issue. If, for instance, where it's mentioned in the, in the uh um attachments where if there's perhaps a vacation of right away, that that the what the right away was originally designated might be an important factor if that right away is vacated. Should it keep the underlying, the initial zoning that it was assigned or you know, is there some new zoning that it should, that it should get? So I I guess that's part of my, part of my thing is I I have seen instances where valuable information's been lost in map updates way too often. So that's what I'm trying to say is, is there, is there a way to keep some of this valuable information in the map but not make it so um obtrusive?
That helps. Thank you. So one of the decision points we have is what to do about designations for zoning. I know GIS's practice is to archive and save previous iterations of every map, whether database or just a map visual. Um. I also see what you're getting at with if someone wants to go to a street, online interactive. Can I click on an associated decision um or something? And I can't speak to that right now. Um, I know capabilities are there. I do get very excited about mapping technology and just having experience with different jurisdiction difference, different jurisdictions. Um, so I know there's ability to site specifically link a relevant document. I I know there's staff resource considerations for how to scan those in and how that would happen. I don't know. So that would be on our minds, I think. Um, what's the staff resource involved in getting those up?
Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you. I in response, not response, in conjunction with Commissioner Quagula's question, um. And considering the staff resources on the time and availability, one of my concerns as you were going through these slides was making it so that our community members don't have to already know that there's another document that they have to reference. If on the map, it would notify them of which documents, even if they were not um there directly. But I love the idea of if I was looking at my house specifically and I clicked on it, there was features of all of these different reference points to find. Um, because I think that that's one of the biggest complaints when I've been talking with developers of um, and even young in the development world. Um. That aren't the the developers that have been doing it for a long time and don't know their way around. We want to make sure it's some as simple as possible, whether it's for a developer or someone who's wanting to develop their own personal property. So if that is something that's available and and we're able to do, considering the staff, I think that that's high important of high importance to make sure that when someone hovers over a specific property, it does indicate where else they should be looking because we don't want, a lot of people in that realm don't know what they don't know. And we don't want to make sure, we want to set them up for success as much as possible.
Thank you for that point.
Commissioner Gill?
I guess I would like to just state that this map um, kind of as you indicated, Monica, should be for all people. So I get it that it's all about development and developers, but I think that people in the community, people um, who have property here should have easy access to this map. Um, and it should not just be electronic. I think having a map like this with as much information as possible on it in a readable way, and I get it has to be readable, is actually really important. Um, because then they can know what developers are gonna do to them, even if they're not a developer. They don't have capacity to be a developer or if they're looking at living in a certain neighborhood, what does that mean if they move to that neighborhood? So I just really want to bring up that we have more than one audience for these maps. And I think it's important that we keep that in mind. Um. And PDFs or even having it, I think having it on the wall in City Hall is actually really important. It also if you do things, if we do things as a city like include um all of the plans that exist. Um, people can understand all the work that's been done and all the plans that are in place and what um that's all good, important work that a lot of people don't really know exist. And so they might look at a neighborhood and be like, well, what's that refinement plan? What's happening there if they didn't follow it before? Like, we want them to be aware of those things. So I really like the idea, or I think it's important that we um try to get the refinement plans in particular and the overlay, the zoning ones in particular, um, because I think that those have a a pretty big impact for all people in the community.
Um, Commissioner Thompson, I just had um one quick follow up to Commissioner Gill's comments and then um we'll get to you. Um, yeah, I think accessibility is a huge um consideration, obviously. I think I I see myself leaning towards the staff recommendation. Regarding their refinement plan options, I think um having, knowing that that a lot of folks will, um, even though most of the users will probably be accessing this information online, realistically, there will be um a segment of the population who will be um accessing the information through PDFs or through printed documents and materials. So um with that in mind, I think option three gives all the information and sometimes all the information is like too is is scary and it's too much information. And you're just getting an avalanche of information. Um, to me, that option three is um, just looking at it is way too busy and I like the simpleness of option four. Um, but being able to um to get to that level of um of information in an online, the the level of information provided in option three in an online format. Um, i- is a great compromise. So I think that staff recommendation is really strong. Um, in my opinion, Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, uh, so thank you, Monica. Uh, first and foremost, great presentation. Um, quick question, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Um, I was looking at attachment seven and just for clarification regarding the hybrid model. Is that its own map or are you saying?
Not yet. Yes, we came up with this after proposing and at least sharing our initial thoughts on different options to those advisory bodies. Um, and we just didn't have time to make a hy- a hybrid. Um. For a printed map, I would look at option four is generally what it would represent.
That makes sense. Yeah. Yeah, uh, same as Commissioner Salazar, I really, I support, I support kind of simplicity. Um, my previous experience as a planner, um, I liked having, I guess, fewer uh layers to to go through and that kind of leads into my next question regarding. I assume I have map springs up right now. You can kind of toggle between, for example, and how it's worked at uh other municipalities. I assume you could toggle between turning on the comp plan in the background, turning on the zone map and switch between the two if you want to. For example, you can see the comp plan designation and then turn off zoning.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Um, my only other thought too, um, it was really helpful again when planners came up to, or no, sorry, when the public came up to the counter and they asked me questions about specific properties. Um, I could click on an individual tax lot, um, which you can do, obviously. But it had uh hyperlinks, like I think has been talked about already to um, basically all zoning and comp plan designations within that. And so you could click on it, open it as a PDF. And it was also opened up to the public, so they could either print it out um, or see it and that would kind of head off questions, you know, so um, I like being able to finally see the comp plan because that'd be a big thing if it was a multi-talented development. Um, that was currently commercial or a lower, lower density, but they wanted to rezone to something more dense, for example. It was really helpful for them to be able to see. Um. To be able to see what was what the comp plan designated. So one last technical question. Um, so I'm new to a refinement. Uh, I haven't seen that before. I've been more involved in from a county perspective, so um, sorry, they're called neighborhood refinement areas and they, and they take precedent over the comprehensive plan designation.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So how does that work as far as like if, for example, maybe it's kind of unrelated to this, this scenario, for example, but if they wanted to change their comp plan designation, would they apply for a change to the refinement plan first or is, which takes precedent, I guess? How's that process work?
They run together. So we have an automatic update. There's code. They run together, so we have an automatic update, there's code language for that. I can't remember the specific section, I'm gonna prompt Christina, she knows it off the top of her head, but our development code, it's in chapter five. And it talks about the relationship between a metro plan diagram and a refinement plan diagram. So the findings in a staff report would have to address both, but for a diagram amendment or a map amendment. They just happen together. So I hope that clarifies a little bit, but if if you're interested in that code section. I can follow up with that, or maybe Christina's pulled it up now.
I'm looking to pull it up right now because it's under the same. As plan text amendments.
While you're doing that, one last question, kind of related to, I I actually liked the new, the right away designation as far as. How, what you're envisioning it to look like, I was curious from a. Planning perspective, say when the public comes into the the front counter and wants to learn. About setbacks and one of the common ones that I found was right away requirements. So how far can I build up to the road? How far does Odada, in this case Springfield, have within to my property that I can build my fence? Is that usually done just on a similar property by property basis? So for some example, someone comes in, gives them the the property address, says, I want to build here, where can I put my fence? Is that kind of a per capita basis, or is that something that could ever be depicted on on a map like this?
For the comprehensive plan map, I don't think that's the place for it, but I like your point. Because being in that role before, I remember lots of questions similarly. So right away designation is more in reference to the what you can do with the property at the time that doesn't become a street anymore. Right away classification is a different thing, so is it an arterial collector local? That dictates the setback, so we. I think we have that on our map spring actually currently, but as far as comp planning, it's just not connected. I'm still gonna capture that, it's important to bring up, I think you make a lot of sense, just in helping people answer a common question.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, that was my whole point is this, is is there possible ways to to head more people off before they have to come in and and that? And kind of create extra extra time for for you all, but no, yeah, I I I understand the concept over the future right away. So they have the right to build up to that, so just curious. That answers my questions, thank you.
Going back to the question about the relationship between metro plans and refinement plans. So before this project, I mean, you know, up to the adoption of this project, there is no parcel specific comprehensive plan. So the refinement plans on the past have acted as those parcels, taking the metro plan Bob diagram and for specific neighborhoods. Refining a designation on a parcel specific basis. But it was a both a sort of drawing the specific boundary process and a policy setting. So those projects also involve sort of what should those designations be? And what specific requirements should pertain to those designations for this area? So it was a lot bigger than just. Doing parcel specific, you know, designations. So the way the code actually works, the way a metro plan works is that that is a refinement, it's intended to be diagram wise. A refinement of the blob diagram, so that relationship will change a little bit in this project. Because we will no longer have, it'll be refinement in terms of policy only, it will no longer be sort of refinement in terms of. Designation boundaries. The way that it works currently is that when the metro plan, if you apply for a refinement plan amendment. That requires a metro plan amendment, then those have to be processed concurrently like Monica said. But the code actually flips it a little bit from where Monica was describing the metro plan is what takes precedence. So if you were to enact a metro plan amendment and not include that refinement plan amendment. For consistency and when was needed, then it automatically amends the refinement plan, if you were to do a metro plan amendment. And the way it's kind of awkward is that metro plan amendments do become site specific. By virtue of like, there's a specific site for which you're seeking to amend the metro plan, so that's how it kind of works to. That's the way in which it can work sort of backward in that way, even though the metro plan itself was blobby. You kind of by by definition can't come in to amend a blob unless you have a very specific property you are looking to. Apply that amendment to. This is like incredibly, these relationships are incredibly complex. And I also want to say that we haven't talked about it consistently over time as a city. And so if it seems like it's confusing and contradicting itself and circular, it is. And that's something we're hoping to fix. Monica's been working really hard on trying to untangle all of these and figure out what are the. What are the best ways to simplify this for the public? Because it's confused, I confuse myself when talking about this. And it's what I do every day for a job, so like Commissioner Gill mentioned. You know, I cannot imagine being a member of the public with no specialized planning background or experience with Springfield planning specifically. Trying to use these currently and and make sense of them.
And I think Commissioner Schmunk brought something up related early on that's still sticking with me. Asking about what does that mean for staff time city cost? Some of these are front end. Timely, like are time intensive, I'd say, but if you think about how does someone get an answer from city staff on what I can do with my property. There's some math work that goes into this, but then for planning staff who interact with the public all the time. This is going to save them a lot of time too, so it's staff time saved, getting to other planning priority projects. It's helping the community get an answer faster too, so. The multiple teams, I'd say there's there's time trade offs, but planning, this is gonna be a huge time savings. I didn't bring that up earlier.
Thank you, and I think, yeah, definitely kudos to all the staff, especially Monica and Christina for. Working to to clarify this this process and all the all the work that's already. Been put in by the volunteers on these committees as well. Also wanted to note that we have about three minutes until our scheduled time to go into regular session, but we can take as much time as we need. For this discussion and then start a little late if we need to. I think Monica's still seeking, I think we've talked, we touched on some of the questions that Monica was seeking input on, but not all of them. So just wanted to see if commissioners had any other opinions or thoughts on any of those other questions. But before that, Commissioner Quagula, you've had your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions and then some comments and recommendations. First of all, the Advisory Committee, I think that we really got some really good participants in the Advisory Committee. And I was wondering if there was any chance of getting their recommendations to us. Because thi- this is a lot more complex project than I initially had thought it was gonna be. When it was just, oh, it's gonna be property line specific. And when I read the the document, it was, it was pretty surprising how complicated some of it is. Couple of my, so that would be really nice to get those if possible. The other thing I had was in regard to splits. Where there are two different varieties of colors or whatever on a single piece of property. We've run into it in the past where there was a good reason to have a particular split. Like say, for instance, you have a piece of undeveloped property that lies in between. Community commercial and single family residential, like the apartments that are up near Fred Meyer. What the planning commission did there was it said, let's have a high density residential. Toward Fred Meyer and then toward the. Single family residential, let's have medium density residential, so sort of to create a buffer. And I could see how that might be something that would be desirable, say, in properties that are butted. Open space, properties that are butted, industrial properties, et cetera. So I could see there there a reason for splits. The other thing I saw and and I thought about about some of the outlines, how the outline is so large. Maybe there's a way to determine what the intent was in doing that outline. I mean, was it to say circumscribe a series of subdivisions? And say that there, you know, they were within this line. So then if the line is three hundred feet outside of that, it's clear that it should actually come in to to match those property lines. And then using air photos, I thought that was a great idea. But the one big question I really had in regard to it was the. Where we're talking about nodal development. I saw something on page thirteen, which let's see, that is attachment. Yeah, it said. If we show nodal development. Change to a mixed use development. It's consistent with the original intent of designating properties as nodes. And I'm not sure that that's, to my thinking, that's not really what. A nodal development is is mixed use, because you could have a mixed use piece of property that develops itself primarily as commercial. You can also have a mixed use piece of property that develops itself primarily as residential. So it it seems to me as if the node, what the node was intended to do was to circumscribe a larger area, number of parcels. To say that these parcels should be developed in this way, which is business oriented. Residential and also employment. So I thought that's, I I kind of thought that that's what a node was supposed to be. And I think if you just all of a sudden blow these, explode these nodes and say, these are all mixed use properties. That you're gonna lose the idea behind originally designating those areas as nodal development. At least that's my, that's my understanding of what. Nodal development was supposed to be, so I don't think mixed use is consistent with intent for developing notes.
Thoughts, but I see Christina, so.
I'm gonna jump in here since that was my statement that you're responding to, although it was Monica's packet. So essentially, the issue here is we would not be, you're correct about that aspect of the intent of nodal development. We would not be losing that piece of the nodal overlay. It would become a component of the designation in terms of an overlay, which is how it is designated for. A lot of properties, areas around Springfield. For some reason, for Mohawk specifically. The only designation that was given to that area at the time was nodal. Everywhere else in Springfield, it was captured as nodal mixed use. So what we would be doing is we would be saying nodal, it becomes an overlay that applies the same way it works with zoning. But if we do that with Mohawk, we have no base designation referenced. So when looking at the zoning decisions that were made at the same time that the designation was called nodal. The I, my perspective, not being someone who was a decision maker at that time, obviously. But my perspective in looking at the packets and and the zoning and how it's played out is that. It's the base designation would be most analogous to mixed use, but the nodal overlay would remain there. It would still be very much part of the comprehensive plan, so any decision to change that in the future would have to address. Sort of what, what happens if you were to get rid of that aspect of nodal and only leave mixed use behind? That would be a comprehensive plan amendment, you would have to look at all kinds of policies. Specific to, you know, both Mohawk and other or other areas if those were to change. But the recommendation to sort of split them apart is partially to help recognize that we may have to call the node something different. Or we may have to capture those policies in other ways, and it will make it a little easier from staff's perspective, my perspective and other staff's perspective. To deal with, to deal with those in the future, if we've got one way of talking about nodal across Springfield, so you know, some places where it's. It is the designation and in other places where it's part, a second level of the designation. But since we have been consistent over time, there's nothing we can do, there's no choice we can make. That makes everything consistent, but also doesn't affect kind of how we talk about overlays and base designations. It was a super long-winded answer, so I apologize for that. But hopefully that addresses the. The the concern that you had about it, you know, keeping consistency with the idea around a notice more than simply mixed use.
No, thank you, that was, that was very clear.
Thank you, and as much clarity as we can get in this process, I think it's helpful to to get into the weeds here. I think regarding one of the questions that Commissioner Quagula had. I guess one way of, I I'm thinking of simplifying that question is, are there any places where the staff recommendations? Differ from the recommendations given by the technical advisory committees?
No, there were instances of there's no clear consensus. The discussion circled and we never, I'd say for nodal in particular with the technical resource group, we never got a definitive something. But from project advisory committee, we did, and thank you for reminding me of Commissioner Quagula's first point. The role of both groups is not to provide a formal recommendation of a final say. So sometimes the discussion was just very open ended, here's the benefits, drawbacks, but we never said move forward with this. They don't have anything as concrete, so it would be the process of just looking at the notes from the meeting and distilling. What were those key takeaways? So when we move forward, there won't be a formal recommendation to the commission, for example. We have all of the project advisory committee's notes available, they should be on the project webpage at this point. So those are publicly accessible, we've made those meetings open to the public as well. So I can check that and confirm and follow up with everybody, hopefully tomorrow, just on. Are they, are they all up on the project webpage? I believe so, at least the first two. We had three meetings with each of the groups.
Great, thank you, Monica. Commissioner Thompson?
One last, so my apologies, I asked a lot of questions, but I I understand that the the goal of this was to get some feedback from us. So I just wanted to say that for my reading of the briefing memo, I I'd absolutely, in my opinion, I support the recommended staff approaches. In particular, like the hybrid, I like that idea, I'd like to see more, I guess, the the full picture of the hybrid option, three quarters, three and four. If that's what that means, and I like the consolidated, the consolidated aspect of it, a mix of. Basically combining as many as possible to mean result in fewer layers for the public data, have to see and have to filter through, so. That's my support, thank you.
Yeah, I think from my end, I also support the staff recommendations, I think they're all. Yeah, understanding that there there's pros and cons to each one, but I think they're all thought through and. Yeah, provide good. Approaches to to each of those questions. Any other commissioners have preferences or thoughts on the approaches? Before we wrap up this work session and get into the regular session? Seeing none, Monica, do you feel like you have enough information and and questions or input to go off of?
Hearing the general feedback on the options and preferred options seem to make sense, yes. We didn't get into much of like the plan flexibility topic, but having that overall conclusion statement really helps. And then Sandy's helping me out and I want to check here. So I will follow up on the project advisory committee meeting notes, making sure things are on the webpage. I know two version, two of the meetings have final notes, I'm wondering about the third at this point, but again, easily sent and provided. And no issue sharing, like I said, everything was public.
Great, thank you, Monica. Commissioner Schmunk?
I did want to ask you about the flexibility, your three options that you have there, so. I I guess my, my preference is for flexibility, but you state that with clear parameters. Which would indicate not flexibility, can you flesh that out a little bit for me?
Yes, so I'm first gonna go to what's entirely flexible where. Say someone comes in, they have a split designation, which are beneficial sometimes as Commissioner Quagula mentioned. Say part of it's open space and part of it is residential, they want to build more housing and provide that. Just fill the need, entirely flexible. Really opens us up to a lot of interpretation and potential litigation or confusion on. How much should that line move? It's not predictable for people. Even that shift in a line, it affects what we do for justifying. And understanding what's buildable or not in our inventory, so no flexibility could mean someone says, I need this moved. a thousand feet, but then that really could mess up or invalidate a buildable lands inventory we need to do for residential. So moving to, well, people want some predictability. We also shouldn't affect our inventory. We also shouldn't leave it totally open ended. This middle or feeling that we shouldn't, this middle ground option, we would specify through some sort of numeric limits, I think, how much someone can move a line. And we have to do the work to figure out what's reasonable there with that work. So I don't have a number like say up to 50 feet. We don't know what that is. We need to think through this a little bit. But there would be a maximum, a maximum flexibility if someone wanted to change the line. There are times someone might not want to, and they think, oh, this is great. This is just fine. But we just need to be sensitive to our other state requirements and plan documents we have adopted, including those official inventories we have in place. I think we'd also have to be clear on what situations this would this option or opportunity we could allow this for. So just mentioned property line adjustments, this could happen, land divisions where you're changing how properties sit. Big master plan development sites like Marcola Meadows. But I think the most relevant point to your question is what's that numeric standard? And we just don't know that exact yet, but we would try to get there.
Commissioner Quivela.
Again, in regard to this, I think it would be really important to try to see if it would be possible to determine the intent of the positioning of that. Because if we provide, if if it's clear that there was no real reason for a line to go across something, then that's one thing. But if if there's anything that would lead us to say that there was an intent to have, say, something excluded from a particular zone, I think it'd be important to carry that on if it's possible to determine intent on some of these properties at this late stage in our history.
In writing policy or a code or say policy in the land use chapter, not just saying situations, but I think that's a good point. And how are we going to implement this? And what are we going to ask of an applicant to write up? Or what are we going to say ahead of time to help form that?
Commissioner Gill.
I am largely, I'm in support of the staff options, staff recommended options. I think it is good to allow for some flexibility, but critical that there are, that there are boundaries within that they need to stay within for that flexibility. And I appreciate the additional reasons that Monica just presented.
Thank you. So seeing no other hands for questions or comments, we will now adjourn this work session. And I just want to take a show of hands and see if, knowing that we don't have many items on the the regular session, just get a show of hands to see if first, yeah, to get a show of hands to see who would like to push through and start the regular session immediately, rather than taking a short break. All right, that looks unanimous. So we'll push through. And I hereby open the regular session of the Planning Commission. Sandy, could we get a roll call, please?
Chair Salazar.
Present.
Vice Chair Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Quivela.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Vice Chair Bergen will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bergen. We will now move to approval of the minutes for September 20th, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? All right, seeing none, I hereby approve the minutes without further, with no corrections. We'll now take business from the audience. This is a time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission. Sarah, do we have anyone in council chambers who's filled out a request to speak card?
No, we have no requests at this time.
All right. All right. And in case there's anyone who would like to join online, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card. It sounds like no one has done that. And so if you would like to raise your hand, when called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address and keep your comments to three minutes. All right, so seeing no hands, we'll move on to business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports from city council meetings? All right, any business from members of the Planning Commission? Commissioner Quivela.
Yes, I'd like to remind the members of the commission that on Springfield, Oregon speaks under the tab for Planning Commissioners, that there's the list of attendance at city council meetings. So if you haven't looked at that recently, it's been updated to include all of our new members. And it's the intent that planning commissioners attend when they're scheduled. If they can't, generally, it's accepted that we are supposed to find our own replacements for those days and that we are intended to provide information about those CEDA meetings, the city council work sessions and regular sessions to the planning commissioners when it's our turn to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Quivela. I also like to remind commissioners that if you're unable to to make it for a specific city council meeting live, that there's always the option to watch a recording later. Those are posted pretty immediately after. All right, Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. This is something that I announce every year, so hopefully this will hit some new ears. The Oregon Realtors has hosted Oregon Housing Economic Summit, which is always really interesting, and I always invite everyone to join. We were just, it was just announced that it's January 19th, so it's a little bit a ways away, but we're in November, so I guess it's not that far, especially knowing we might be having holiday recess coming up. So January 19th, it is virtual, and this is where the Oregon Bankers Association, the Oregon Realtors and the Oregon Home Builders Association come together and talk about housing factors and things that will affect housing supply, availability and the price. And it's probably one of the best summits that I've been to, and I go to a lot of summits. And so that's one that's really interesting. And if anyone is interested in signing up for that, I can send the info over to Sandy so she can send it out to everyone.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bergen. All right, not seeing any other raised hands. Do we have any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
Sure. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager. And just to let those of you know who are online, we do have four students from the University of Oregon in attendance tonight. Graduate students in the Planning, Public Policy and Management Department. So your work is being observed and appreciated, hopefully. Also, we have a new staff person joining us tonight that I would, who I would like to introduce. Her name is Chelsea Hartman, and she is joining us as a senior planner. And Monica is going to be taking a leave, and so Chelsea is going to be taking the leadership role for this comprehensive plan project, the map clarification while Monica is out on leave. So welcome to Chelsea and she Chelsea, do you want to say a few words? I'll let you introduce yourself.
Sure. So I'm super excited to be here. It's my second week with Springfield. I just came over. I was a senior planner with City of Eugene, working on similar work with the comp plan map over there for a few years. So just real excited to be here and looking forward to working with you all.
I'll say with
I was just going to say, welcome to Team Springfield, Chelsea.
Thank you.
We've also hired two other current planning staff recently. A senior planner to replace Melissa Carino and planner two to replace Drew Drew Larson. So Drew has taken a job as a planner two in transportation because we have a fair amount of transportation work coming with the climate friendly equitable communities rulemaking. And so we created a new position for him. So we have these two new current planners, one who's been here for, she's in her second week, Jessica Shul, and then I'm completely Tom Severs, and Tom is going to be as the senior planner is going to also staff the Historic Commission. And so we only have one vacancy currently, so we are still advertising for a senior transportation planner to which is the position that Emma Newman held when she worked here. So hopefully we'll be able to get up to full staffing and planning, and that will make things a lot easier for people to keep up with the work and get things done.
Thank you, Sandy. And I'd just like to remind commissioners that please, if you know anyone who would love to be a planner with the city of Springfield, please let them know and encourage them to apply. All right. And with that, I will adjourn the Planning Commission regular meeting. We'll see you all in two weeks.